One of them nine or six. They gotta have one for, they gotta have one for Dogville and the, our dog, what? Good.
Man, it's hot.
All right, sir.
I'm fine.
Judge, are you?
Everyone?
What's that, young man?
Really good job with it.
Thank you, Lord. If I ask a question, I can.
Might get hotter.
Proper.
Curbing up to.
Oh, I'm trying to close some alleys in Jean.
Alleys in Jean?
Yeah.
This pasture. You've already closed them all, then?
Yeah.
I'm not talking about putting pants on.
Well, we need, was, for center line, every word of that team.
But you got a band.
Yes, that's what we, yeah, yes, that's what we had to do, the band.
You want to say something about this? Can't, look at it, kind of a warm outfit, some long sleeves.
It'll have it on.
It's in rotation.
Well, we got one that was seen west, that's what that is.
Yeah, I know it, but it's not on the agenda, we can't make any action on that.
Well, let's put it on the national, okay.
Do you call it over here?
Well, I left the three weights on the side well. We'll do that, we'll just take it on the back there. Just push it next to me.
Twenty, thirty. Twenty second.
Okay, well, put it on the agenda for a second, I'll tell you what I have to say today, and I will come over in a second.
How are you?
I'm good, you all right? Ready?
Where are you going?
Hello, honey.
Hello.
Enjoy your holiday.
Oh, I would.
That's not, that's not enjoying a holiday.
Yeah, thank you.
So I called a meeting door, Young County Commissioners Court, setting a regular meeting Tuesday, October the ninth, two thousand eighteen. It is nine thirty-two AM. Might note that this meeting was published before the time in the matter applicant to the, to the law. Might note that all members report are present, if it's convenient, you'll please stand for our, in our favor.
Yes, sir. Done spray. Well, rest of the heaven, the Father, thank you, thank you, thank you for the blessing of the rain that you have brought this country. We certainly do appreciate it. Thank you for the men and women in uniform that keep evil from our doors, patrol our streets, put their lives between us and evil every day. Thank you for the men and women in uniform overseas that are fighting for the American way of life and keeping that evil away. Thank you so much for everything you give us, in Christ's name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
Item number three, public comments, announcements, presentations, these are no action items. We have on there, I have a tenure package, a request for, a solicitation for nominations for the agricultural group and, um, water conservation, water planting group area B, which includes the city of Ony. Evidently they have opening in there. That's just a small park that's come over into Young County out of area B. I think our group is mostly G. Also, we have Kerwin, if you want to come up there and address the court just a second.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is an item that we request you put on the agenda for the next commissioners meeting, but, uh, I indicated to take it off late last week because of three week notice requirement that has to place in the newspaper. But what it is, uh, Mr. Clayton runs out of property and turns out some improvement approach over to alleys there in Jean. Now, the alleys haven't been used for a number of years, since it's been practically abandoned, but not, uh, in the court else records. And so, uh, we're gonna make a request, so the application that I have brought here today, made a bullet early this morning, that the court, when the time comes and after notice, acts firefully in our request to abandon the alleys. There's nobody using for access, it's not even used at all, but it still shows, uh, the, uh, Clayton alley there in block twenty-eight. And, uh, particularly since we've got approvals that go out over, but we'd like to try and see if we can get that cleaned up, uh, when time comes. And, uh, that's all we have is that. We'd like to, some indication when the court can act on it, so I can put that in the notice that, uh, I need to take over the newspaper, where y'all take it up next, next to the meeting.
Clayton has to be, uh, in three separate weeks.
Yes, sir.
Publication within general protection account?
Yes, it does.
Um, or is your application here, is it just for the alley or for the, that section?
It's just for that section, it's a block, like we want to get in the alleys.
None of it's ever been developed, has it besides that one location?
It's.
Owned by the same person?
All owned by the same person.
And also the same person?
Yeah, all the same person, no jointing property owners, it's all ten times of the one ownership.
Well, I'd like to please, well, there, um, just any, just cancel that subdivision, that part of the subdivision in that block, block twenty-eight.
That's all we're asking.
Okay.
Are there not any utilities around through the other?
Uh, it doesn't show it on the survey, I've got it patched to it, I don't believe it's being used for utilities, there are utilities going to residents, but that would be, they're respective of the alley.
This is where it is, is Long Island, right here.
That's right.
And it's the, the land north of her house, right there, with the Jason tree, right there.
Just look at the last, uh.
Take it to the last page.
Page, where it is, that's, it's just got prompted by the survey.
Yes.
Show the location of the improvements that go over it, it's real far in the backyard and, and all that, so.
Yeah.
We have to clean that up and order facilitation sale problem, is what it's about. But that's all I have, anybody have any questions, be happy to.
We got noticed if you wish to cancel that item, we had on the agenda.
I did, I thought better of it, I probably rather, you know, put it a little luckier with it and, and, uh, but, uh, like, just like.
We got noted to be on the next agenda.
That'd be appreciated.
And at that time, then, we'd be, I think it's, I don't know if it's your responsibility or our responsibility, I think it might be our responsibility, folks noticed that.
I've got a notice prepared for your consideration, we can take it to the paper, whatever's, please, before y'all have facilitated where I can do so.
Very good, I will, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, um, that the public would like to discuss?
Nathan Lawson, the grand leader, so I just wanted to note that there is a petition circulating in the community right now to dissolve the Grand Hospital District. And I know if the petition in the subsequent vote were to be successful, any governmental agency within the district, including the county, could absorb the assets in the debt. So I was just gonna see if you guys were willing to discuss if that would be something you guys wanted to take on, should that happen.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make a comment about that right now, one way or the other, I'm well aware of that, and it's been counseling with people in Natural Guard, just knowledgeable about that.
Yeah, I think it'd be pretty clear for us to discuss it right now, the law is pretty clear about what kind of steps are taken, should that happen. So we just need to keep an eye on what's going on there. That, uh, election would also, does that come under, when would that election be held if they're successful in the petition process?
Uh, there's a timeframe there.
Within sixty days. Within sixty days after the.
Okay, so it would be a special election?
Yes.
Which is a caution.
And it wouldn't be us calling that election before, right?
Judge Bullock, may I address him?
Aye. Cassie.
I'm here on behalf of my parents today, they live out on Top Road, and they live across from the Warrior Ranch. And they were asking that the county put in place some kind of noise ordinance to help control some of the effects of Warrior Ranch being rented out. Parties, weddings, things like that, they live up in country, where they have, I think, Knack United Two, but never had any problems with anything like this. And, um, now they're being, the noise is too excessive, they are no longer being able to stay in their home and sleep at night. Um, and they're not wanting to impose on other people's property rights, if they would like their property rights perspective. And, uh, they're asking that y'all would maybe consider creating some kind of noise ordinance throughout the country, or in the county, not just in the city, the municipality, but throughout the entire county, so that the sheriff's department could do something if they were called. Could, could you, could have some kind of recourse to prevent further.
Cassie, we have that on, that very thing on, on, agenda, um.
On the agenda?
Yeah, I got it on there. So we'll be discussing it clearly here shortly.
Okay.
And I'm gonna make you a copy of this, too, that I got, so you can kind of look ahead.
Okay.
And then when we get to it.
Okay. I just didn't want to, I don't know how long these meetings are, I want to rearrange y'all's schedule, but I'm gonna bring to your attention if that's what I was here for.
Are you gonna be able to hang around for a little while?
May, for a little while.
Your boss must just hear you.
The court's pleasure, if it's the court's pleasure, that we, when we get through with this item three, we'll take that matter up.
Sounds great.
I'd really appreciate that.
Sounds good.
Is there any other comment, public comment or, or any statement that any of the public wish to make? None, then we'll move on to our regular agenda, and with the court's pleasure, we'll move down to item, um, number seventeen, if it is the court's pleasure, and it is a discussion regarding to county noise ordinance. Mr. Pruitt, uh, this is your item.
Right.
Have something to say about it.
Yeah, well, I was contacting Officer Shepherd, and, uh, we, we discussed it and started doing some looking, sheriff helped me and stuff like that. But we found that this has gone to have a county, a city can have a, a, a noise ordinance, a county cannot. It has gone to the Texas Legislature, and it has failed twice, um, for a county to set a noise ordinance. But there is something in the penal code that we need to go in more depth in, that says if it's eighty-five decibels or more, then they can do, they can enforce it. Now, we gotta find out from where the eighty-five decibels are measured from, is it from the road, is it from where they're at? We're gonna do some more, yeah, here's this, Cassie. Okay. Um, and that's basically where we're at right now, the county, I mean, by state law, the county cannot set a noise ordinance. But if it is enforceable by the penal code, Travis, do you have anything to say?
I mean, from what, what it says, a county cannot enforce any kind of a noise ordinance. But the state says that if we can prove that that noise is over eighty-five percent decibels at your locations, then we can enforce it.
We don't, we don't have any, we don't have any authority to regulate noise out of the county, um, according to the penal code, it's a class C misdemeanor, and those kind of complaints need to be directed to our sheriff.
Yeah, that's what this is.
So, all the way to do that is get a decimal meter, come to your place, and then check and see.
So sheriff, if you get this right, it'd have to be eighty-five at their home?
Has to be at their home.
Oh.
Now, and here's the thing, it's, it's very gray. The way I read it would be, it would almost have to be at the place, like at their house, if it's eighty-five decibels at their house.
Inside or outside?
Outside.
And, and that's what I've, I've discussed with Travis, um, last night, we were discussing it, and I work for a police department, and we had a decimal meter, and we had to set at the curve to measure the decibels.
From the house.
Yeah, from the house, so we couldn't go onto the property and measure it, we had to be on a, on the, on the highway, so that was a city ordinance, so I'm not sure.
And the county road would be?
Right, the county road would be road, right.
Question, have y'all discussed this any with the operator?
Yes, yes, sir, we have, uh, multiple times, and they assured us twice that it wouldn't happen again, but it did, and that's why we're here.
Music can be heard five point eight seven miles in a direct line, I have three witnesses that were there that could hear it that far away.
We tried.
We're, we're twenty-two hundred feet away.
We tried to do a little research on what kind of sound system it'd take to do that, and, you know, that's a concert quality type, you know, a hundred plus decibels. So the people there in that venue are only subdue, I think, it's a hundred and eleven seconds before they start having hearing loss. So, you know, what's the point in having something that's blasting that music that's gonna destroy the hearing of your guest? And, you know, making everybody in the whole community miserable that can be heard, you know, miles away.
How late is this going for?
Two thirty.
Two thirty?
Yeah, they started about.
Was the last?
The last one started about four in the afternoon, and went, the first one stopped at like one fifteen, and the other one stopped about two thirty, was the last time I could still hear it. So, but we were, we had left the house and tried to, I told Grenison, let's try to do something fun and keep them driving us insane, so we went camping about two miles away.
Still hear it?
We still hear it, yeah.
I'm still, with earplugs.
So, you know, it was, it was, most of the time, the Warrior bunch has been pretty good, and they, you know, we've only had one other instance that you could actually hear the music in the house, and the whole time they've been there.
Is this any specific group?
Yeah, this was a, this was a Takano, uh, wedding.
Wedding?
Yes, sir.
It was an event, a planned event.
And it, you know, they had a.
They've had quinceañeras, they've had weddings. Does, uh, Winter Warriors figure on this system out there?
No. It's on, it's on by the, by a board, you know, they have a board. Oh, the music, no.
They bring their own music system?
Yeah, they, they showed up out there and I, three hundred.
Looks like it's a concert quality system.
Yes, sir.
They brought two bands set up on an eighteen wheeler flatbed trailer, so they're outside of the venue with these bands set on, up on the trailer blasting music.
They assured us that, we went to a meeting with them, I believe it was last Tuesday night, and they said that they, they didn't even have any type of written agreement or nothing, you know, they're, they're renting this out by word of mouth. And they assured us that they were gonna make sure the music was kept in the building and, and stuff like that, so I'm hoping that we won't have any more trouble. But then I'm feeling sorry for anybody else that's, you know, in the county that's put in a situation.
And even on their deal, I mean, even if it's in the building, y'all still heard it.
Yeah.
Because I went out there and had them turn it down, and they turned it way down, and I stayed there until it was over, and, and it was inside the building.
About what, which, which time?
It was like three or four weeks ago.
Okay.
And it was inside.
It was?
And you could still, they could still hear it.
Wow.
Well, I understand the irritation and, uh, appreciate that, but our authority in that matter is pretty, very non-existent, really, in the, um, the proper, um, point of leave to the sheriff. And that would be Avenue Travel, and that regarding to the law changes, and gives us some authority to make those kinds of orders. We don't have the ordinance making capability of being a separate, general law or unruly one.
I would urge you to contact your representative senators, that can be changed. We can only act under what is legislated by law, cities can act as long as they're not violating the law, do pretty much anything they want. So, uh, that's the difference in the county and the city, so ordinances don't really apply at the county level, since we're branch to state government.
I, I called my representative, which I've called before, and they never returned my call, as of yet, they might eventually, but.
Did you call, you called Drew Springer?
No, I talked about my, uh, the, the, Eric, Jody Erickson, the.
Okay, now, he's, he's US, so.
Right, I realize that, yeah.
You drew a call, if you have to, get in touch with him, I'll see if I can get him to contact you, 'cause he's the one that needs to introduce legislation to take care of this. And, and like I said, this has failed twice in the House to set ordinances in the county, so, without that, we're on.
Well, if there's anything that I can do, because a lot of your research, this is not my particular area of expertise, but I'd be happy to, you know, look up, help, whatever.
I would like to find out how close the vote was on the two times that they tried to pass it, and just see where the voting block is coming from that is stopping that from passing. She's writing it down.
Did the Winter Warrior Board kind of feel for you and think they needed to write that in their rules and regulations?
We, we were asked to meet with them Tuesday a week ago, and three out of ten board members.
Yeah, most of them.
That was the same three board members that I had text in both events asking for help, and was assured that it wouldn't occur again, and I was unresponded to the night, this last time, you know, two weeks ago, when it was so horrible.
Yeah, they wasn't even texting back.
Not even respond back.
We knew it was.
After the event, then they wanted to talk about it.
They knew it, they knew it was coming, 'cause we'd been told it was coming like three days before, and they didn't ever respond to her text. So they just collected their money and, and let them have it party.
You know, there may be a free app that you can put on your telephone, the decimal meter, that you might check.
Yeah, you can, I looked them up on the internet, they're relatively inexpensive.
Yeah, they're, they're not very expensive.
Thirty-five to twenty-five dollars, and the Warrior, at the meeting the other night, they said they were gonna buy them one, and so.
But they still can't enforce it.
Yeah, it's just, but if, I need that meter.
Yeah, so it perks in on his front porch, a decimal meter, take a, a picture of it or a movie of it, send it to you, you got something to go about?
Hold up in court.
No, that wasn't hold up, but you'd need your own, and, and like you said, they're thirty-five, forty bucks, buy five of them, the whole department's got them in all your work duties.
Thing is, is that these event planners are not allowed to have it at Warrior Ranch, they're gonna find another spot.
That's gonna move the noise somewhere.
Like then it backs out, next thing you know, they're gonna be at Loving trying to get in that building, you, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and apologies looking for the welfare of the whole county, not just your place.
Right.
Good.
That's right.
I've had them pretty much everywhere, I have one, race track.
No. I think we.
Not more.
I think the question about how many votes was, is answered in here, it says none of them made out of session.
None of them made out of session, I was wondering, but did the rural folks vote for it, and the urban folks voted against it? And that's what you usually get.
We were just wanting to be able to give the sheriff's department tea to the event, but that's.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause they, they seemed like they were just as powerless as we were, you know, but they knew it was a nuisance, and that, there's nothing they can do about it anymore than, than we could, other than, you know, I guess we could turn around and sue the owners of the Warrior Ranch, but they're in that, something that you don't wanna have to do.
Well, that's something that should, that, um, the Warrior Group, um, the board runs that facility and operates it, something that should be able to be worked out in agreement.
You would, you would hope so, yeah.
At least, um, with the rental leasing to some group like that, um, if, if, you know, when their currents, uh, uh, went over and above their contract measures. I don't know, I think a civil discussion, problem resolved, yeah, shouldn't be able to, I believe, resolve it anyway.
We've tried.
I guess you've driven up there, or your officers have, and asked them to turn it down?
No, but we've even, we've even had work security on one of them, and they, they do exactly what we asked them, and they probably wouldn't as loud that night, but they haven't asked us the last two times or three times, and that's whenever they just run them up and do whatever.
And we could literally, we knew that they'd been out there four times, because they'd turn it down, and you'd hear nothing, and after a couple of minutes, it'd go back up to where it was, and they'd crank it more like, you call the cops, we're gonna go louder, and every time, they'd just get louder and louder.
As the evening wears on, they gotta turn it up louder just to hear it, 'cause their hearing's going way.
It's incredible.
It's a pretty measurable deal. I sit in front of your house and can hear it.
Is there any, any motions anybody would like to draw, that's no access technique?
I tell you, I'm gonna go ahead and get that. Yeah.
I think I'll be also sorry.
Yes, I appreciate your help.
Sir. We got the number.
Well, maybe, maybe the, maybe the, the venues will take it seriously and try to, try to keep it civil. Thank you all.
This, this is just like the noise, isn't it? Not near that, but.
You're welcome, Scotty.
Thank you, thanks.
He's not taking your invitation.
Item number four, Senator County Clerk, minute previous meeting, that'll be September tenth, and the thirteenth, and the twenty-fourth, and the twenty-seventh. Are there any additions, additions, corrections that may be made?
Have you made what you did on?
I've got, uh, Stacy brought one, and I've, I've already made the portion on the end, so I'll have another one.
John, you voted for the debt service. It showed on here, but.
You didn't.
Well, it does, have you made a correction on these?
I don't know, because it showed there.
I don't know, I'm standing by the three, five. Excuse me?
The one that only, you can copy, and it showed your signs on the minutes. No, it's on the T M.
Is it you, or is it Stacy, is Stacy right?
Only Chris Kirk here.
Should be discussed.
My motion, self, debt service rate, um, one oh eight, five, six, eight, two. Plankton's operating at, uh, this other, uh, shows that, um, actually, um, those shouldn't be separated out in individual votes. I voted for the debt service and owe the operations rate.
So, the one above that one should, uh, space, consider adoption of tax rate.
Or debt service.
That one should, Stacy.
Now, this, uh, right here says then, make my, make my motion to the sheriff.
Yeah, I said it to Judge Bullock, you should've said Stacy Rogers.
Am I right on that one, on the same, is that the same? Says consider adoption of tax rate.
Right. Yeah.
And that first paragraph should end with Stacy Rogers.
Should've been Stacy Rogers to John Woo. That should be it. Put those changes up like the motion, the three, seven minutes. I guess it'll be the last three sets. Four, four.
Okay, a correct, uh, correction on September the tenth, twenty eighteen?
Yes.
Out of.
Number three?
Three.
Out of reconsider adoption of tax rate.
And then she made a correction on.
For the public hearing.
For September thirteenth, thought so.
Very safe. Got the same in the big bracket?
Yes, she's, she done, she done it. Well, not only that, yeah, there was two of us wasn't here, it says the meeting made that all committee of the president.
This looks, this looks.
She corrected it.
Twenty-fourth, is there any corrections, additions, or additions? Motion to. Approved, approved the minutes, September tenth. As corrected.
I don't make that motion.
Four in total?
Four, one total. One motion, four total.
Second batch.
All in favor of as corrected? And, uh, for September thirteenth, the twenty-fourth, and the twenty-seventh. As indicated on these, I believe this is correct. Only a favor vote? I guess we better have a motion, we'll do that same way, time to.
Four.
Four.
For the thirteenth, twenty-fourth, twenty-seventh.
I think he made a motion for all four of them.
Okay.
It was that first, that first motion.
When I called it that way.
We were talking about doing it in total.
We called for the corrected, called for the corrected minutes individually.
Right. I understand that Commissioner Wiley made the motion, said with those corrections to tenth, I moved all minutes to be approved.
I call a question for, uh, the minutes as corrected for September the tenth. Got a motion from Commissioner Wiley and a second from Commissioner Sykes.
Well, that wasn't what I thought I was seconding, but go ahead.
And now I'm gonna call a motion for the minutes for the thirteenth, the twenty-fourth, and the twenty-seventh combined as, as presented.
I'll like your call. I'll second that one off.
There, I haven't been corrected yet. Out of number five, I'm, I'm set to correct the financial report, I'm back on the security, please.
I have August, uh, books balanced, I have September's just about ready, but there's a few items at the end of the budget here I don't have. August, we had, uh, seven million, six hundred nine thousand, two hundred fifty-sixty-four in the overall fund balance. And I don't have a copy of the pledge.
Uh, show the, over, excess plan from the two billion, three seventy-five, it's pretty serious.
So, we don't need excess plan in October, financial report.
Most of my commissioner, Wiley second my commissioner Rogers to approve the federal financial report as presented, including, um, information of the garden, hotel, office, seat tax.
Yeah, I thought that was the same thing, it was on there last time.
Call in favor?
Yeah.
As a matter, for your information, those letters have been sent out to three or four individuals that are wronged that's outside the county.
I had a call from one of the gentleman, he was very nice, he said he didn't know, and that whenever they had, uh, an event, that he would certainly send the county their money.
Yeah, um, I didn't really know, you know, about Kevin, just hope that one. And they didn't have any letter.
Right.
We didn't have any legal, neither.
Yeah, he just has a small, high fence, hunting ranch.
Okay, very good. Out of number six, is considered order for the budget amendments of county payable?
And vouchers, of course, always a matter. We're paying out of two years now on the vouchers. So, for the, um, twenty eighteen vouchers, the total is fifty-nine thousand, two forty-eight, sixty-five. And out of the general fund on that is twenty-nine thousand, nine sixty-six, eighty-nine.
Okay, the first number was.
Fifty-nine, two forty-eight, sixty-five. Uh, sixty-five.
Go ahead.
And that's on the, the eighteen's, and they're just honestly tank, included in that one. On the nineteen vouchers, the total is eight thousand, seventy-three dollars and eighty-two cents. And out of the general is seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-nine cents. Here for the next couple of weeks, we'll probably finish up on the eighteen's hopefully, and weed those out, and everything coming in is gonna be nineteen, so. You can.
You said a motion, I don't know. I made a motion for federal vouchers for twenty eighteen. Okay, I'll read multiple Rogers.
I'll second that.
I have a motion with Commissioner Rogers, I'm second by Commissioner Sykes, to approve that the table is presented for. What are we just doing this one, or?
Quite twenty eighteen.
Is my eighteen.
FY eighteen, fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Call in favor, uh, of the, um, four zero one, with Commissioner Wiley abstaining. And I'll make a motion for the root vouchers for the twenty nineteen, eight thousand, seventy-three, eighty-two. Motion by Commissioner Rogers and second by Commissioner Wiley. To approve that the payable for FY eighteen in the amount of eight thousand, thirty-three dollars.
Eight oh seven, three eighty-two.
Call in favor, uh, um.
Okay, uh, a few weeks ago, y'all had approved to take out the judge's door out of courthouse security to get his. And I can't remember now, and I didn't have the, uh, the bid on that. It actually, because we went ahead and got a button in there so the judge can open the door from his office, he can see and open the door. And he got the camera in there, it came out, uh, I think it's about seven, eight hundred dollars higher. Uh, so the whole thing was one thousand, nine eighty-one, twenty-one. But they're fixed up and it's working, but this was out of courthouse security.
We don't have two thousand dollars.
There's hundred, ten thousand dollars in there. Yes, and. Oh. That's two. Yeah, it's coming out of courthouse security, and I don't have that original, I was saying like, we don't have that original, because it's, um, for the third station, you know, it's seven hundred and ninety dollars more, so, I think twelve, nine, nine is what we actually.
So, this, this is bigger than the amount we approved?
Yes.
Cause he did all that, the later was six, sixty-five, and then, I didn't know he put tax on there.
Do we need to approve the addition and then prove the total voucher?
Tax, but that's gonna be about seventeen, he put tax on there, and then taken it off, and he gave us a thousand dollar discount, so it's gonna be about seventeen hundred dollars. So, five hundred dollars, so we want the original. Yes, there's ten thousand in the courthouse security.
Should we even approve the addition before we approve the voucher?
Uh, I'd say so.
I move that we approve the additional costs that paid through courthouse security.
Thank you, I'll, I'll get that tax off there, we'll get it paid.
Uh, I'm hoping, uh, Commissioner Sykes, second by Commissioner Wiley, to approve the added cost of the security system, just the judge's office, call in favor.
And we go to the voucher.
The total of the voucher, it was thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars.
That voucher hasn't been paid?
No, sir.
I think we need to prove that.
Will you approve part of it, but it was an additional, so we had to pay it, we have not paid it. I don't, he's like, hey, until they finish.
To the additional amount?
Texas main security. M A, uh-huh, M A D E.
Call in favor?
Seven, how much was it, uh, additional?
One, well, after I took that tax off, it's about five hundred dollars. Exact amount of invoice would be one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four.
Judge, my name is Judge Rogers, number eleven. Back to them, out of number eleven, discussing conservative United Society contract, Young County, Kansas City, Grand County down.
Um, okay. Well, first, I wanna do, just, I can present you guys with our, our files. And then also, I would say, you know, I appreciate getting a chance to actually have a contract to my knowledge, I don't, I could not find any other contracts in the county that we've had. But again, kind of the basis, I think, is that.
No, that is, no, we're having on.
Okay, so, um, so that's awesome, I think that this is a, a really good contract, I think there's some things that we can, uh, clarify a little bit. And, and on, um, I think what you have in conditions of three, regarding the, those reports, I mean, um, we have a responsibility to our, our donors, and our employees to protect them from private information, um, you wouldn't be. Um, you wouldn't be asking for access to any of that.
Well, the information is needed to be private, it was not, those information would be important to send it out of nature of the case.
Falls under hit?
Yeah, okay, so, um, plus I couldn't find anything in, like, I don't think that I know if it necessarily falls under, like, the federal, I just never thought about it in that. I don't believe that the shelter policy or, um, they protect people in Texas from the COVID act.
Well, the power, you can, uh, totally, uh, you can operate, I don't believe we can operate without.
So that was one of the things that, you know, that I was sort of looking at. And then we may need to, I just want to make sure, to be honest, I mean, like, talk with any lawyers that are around that may specialize in non-protected law, we were going to get with and see if we could find somebody that wanted to help us with that. And then I also think that possibly, I didn't see anything anywhere on here for the sheriff to sign, the sheriff's office. And I thought maybe since they're such an integral part of this arrangement with us and, and the county, maybe, uh, cause under conditions under number one, um, it's saying that the peace officer, officer, they're, they're, and if you could crack that out, they're saying that the sheriff's office is supposed to pick up the animals and deliver them to the sheriff's.
With or without contract, they have that authority. Our contract is that if, I'll make this, can anybody come in there and deliver an animal to him unless they're in, outside the county, they're in the, in the regular areas.
I'm sorry, Keith, there is, anybody, we, cause we take owners to run them.
At some point in time, at some point in time, Young County may have an animal pro fall under there, but until we do, we haven't had one in many years. But that's a prospect that we may have that, a pro officer, and that's part of the reason why that's in there, but, um, in other words, the police, city policemen can't come in there and just render one or for Young County, that's going to have to be the city or, or a colony officer can't come in and submit one for Young County only.
Um, I was wondering about that, uh, I know what the laws, what the law is about the county picking them up and everything, but with, uh, the liability that falls on our guys picking one up and taking them, I don't know if we really, uh, want to get into that, but that's up to y'all, if y'all want, if we want to try to.
You're putting it off.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't know if we, if we're, as far as liability wise, um, if we want to put these dogs that have parvo or whatever diseases they have in our vehicles, or fleas or tigs, you know.
Well, upon, like, Chris, you have the authority to.
Absolutely, absolutely, you're right about that.
I'm saying you have the authority whether you decide to exercise that authority or not.
So, so they don't have to, they just can.
Can, yeah.
They can, okay, and that doesn't affect anything about owner's, or anybody in Young County Council, so, or, and, you know, correct, okay. We have another question. Okay, um, so I just wanted to see if I could have just a little bit more time to see if I can get a, I just, I would hate to have just taken over and I'm, you know, I'd like to have, like, a lawyer that's like a nonprofit specialist look at it with me, so I can, I mean, if I could have a little bit more time, um, cause we have, like I said, we just, we got you guys our, our new bylaws, which I think will satisfy everything, they're based on the ninety-seven bylaws.
Well, you know, there are going to be a issue, as I know the city program, I said government organization, you're receiving months, probably months of contributions from them, or you still receive. And we're committing twenty thousand dollars in funding to you, so, you're depend, you are dependent on your government funding. Uh, you as a nonprofit organization, if you, if you didn't have to help those, if governments wasn't funding you and you could make, or even if they were and you could make the argument that you didn't have to have those funds to operate, and you could operate fine without the overall funds, then, you know, it would be some different provisions, but because you take government funding and it appears that you could not operate without government funding, then, you know, you're going to be somewhat open to that, and I think the court probably ought to require, um, that your meetings be open, your records be.
Well, I think as, as open as possible.
I'll leave your request to take some more time to verify that contract with the council through. I think that'd be fine, I would move that we table it until next meeting, two weeks.
Well, that's fine.
Okay.
And we appreciate your, I mean, your, your own money.
Really working on it, I mean, we've only been, I mean, we really aren't working on it, it took us a long time to revise those.
Well, obviously you've been very careful about reading that, and you should be, that's good.
You're doing a very good job.
Yeah.
I'm safe.
We're just going to bring it up until we get it authorized.
And we understand that.
Chris, everything okay with doing it?
Sounds good.
It's, it's good to see somebody. Sir, it's good to see somebody interested in it, taken care of the way it should be. Those details that we took care of years ago.
Lots, lots of good things.
They will tag it out on the future of the agenda.
Let us know when you're ready to put it back on.
Thank you.
Would you second that? Call in favor. Item number seven, considering roadway bond, we from Sheriff Terry Riley, Deputy Clerk Justice, please precinct number one, five thousand dollar bond, Harley D Moore, Young County Attorney Clerk, five thousand dollar bond. Motion by Commissioner Wiley and second by Commissioner Rogers to approve the roadway bonds as presented, call in favor.
Does anyone like copy the bylaws while they're here?
Item number eight, consider extension agent Justin Rogers, penny baron report, request reimbursement, um, eight seventy-four, eighteen, and three sixty-seven, sixty-two, effective.
I'd move to through the reimbursement detention agent. What, what direction, September seventeen? Did it? Do you not see it on there? He says the month, September twenty-seventeen. Oh, did you say seventeen, twenty-eighteen? I got it.
When you did for seven, ten?
What's that?
I think I heard two seconds about the same time.
I got the second, he was talking about this.
Did it have the wrong date on the request?
Motion for Commissioner Sykes and second by Commissioner Wiley to approve the request as presented on paper, about five thousand.
You could go down to the thirteen if you could.
Item number thirteen, Joe, is that why you're here?
Uh, I think so, sir.
Okay, discuss, consider hug grant for loading water supply for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, give you a license.
Well, I have, I've got a little information sheet here for you.
I understand that, but that's a resolution to support or something like that.
Oh, well, this is now.
A little break coming down our pipe.
I'll do a breakdown for you then, I like, I'm not going to speak for loving, as well as I would make, this is just, excuse me, general information about the program we're hoping to get there, I asked for.
Well, of course, information, Joe Cox, who, it's one of the physical.
I'm the Director of Regional Services from Nortex, it's getting regional planning commission.
Getting froggy here on the set. Certainly.
That's probably it, probably that pot of water that I can drink. Anyway, what, uh, loading waters five districts asking for a grant to redo some water lines, uh, I don't think we're expanding anything, are just redoing water lines, that's how they have water lines to be redone. This is the community development block grant, and, uh, it's only sponsored by cities or counties, since they're not incorporated, they have to have county sponsorship. In that county sponsorship, basically y'all will hold the contract and the funds flow through y'all, loving us, we don't touch any, we'll just run the program if it's approved, and we're not paying, nobody gets any money unless we're approved for a project from the TDA. But they have to do a couple of things, we have to see if we can qualify fifty-one percent load mod to get into the program, and then we'll have to, for our survey, see if they hit that fifty-one percent, and then of course have sponsorship from the county.
Do we get it before we spend it?
Yeah, we get to see if we can find, if we can qualify. But anyway, the funds, uh, grants due in February, uh, we would not have any idea whether we're funded or not, probably till June or July of nineteen, that's about the timeframe. Uh, city, or excuse me, the water supply district would come up with the match, and that was required for the program, and I think it's twenty-seven, five right now at this time, and they would pay for any ads or anything like that that has to be done, you know, for the process.
And as sponsor, does the county become responsible for the proper application and expenditure of the funds?
Yes, because you hold the contract, like, loving does not hold the contract, you guys hold the contract, but that's where we come in, we come in to walk you through it, I mean.
Contract for the grant.
For the grant, I mean, we, we've done it for Forest County, Will Barker County, Hartman County, Archer County, Monte County, I mean, we, we routinely do them for the.
So the grant is being requested by Young County for the benefit of loving?
Yes, yes, yes.
If that's the only way they could get received.
Yes, that's the only way they can get the funding, correct.
And this, actually here tells us all the conditions or?
Yes, that, just information on the front here just kind of explains how the program flows, and everything on the back is the scoring criteria here from the RRC, this looks sets on it, that where we, you know, scored the application, and then the state has twenty points to put on the end third stretch.
I don't think they'll let me score that.
So, Sheriff, so if we did something like that, would we have to just add any line in there? Will you blow it through Young County?
Should certify the additional funds and the grant funds for the, for that.
But does that increase our budget with an offset of revenue?
Well, it just, it would be, and no, it would increase our budget.
It'd just be in and out.
Yeah, I know it'd be in and out, it's still going to be adjusted.
I don't think, I don't think it necessarily be into creating a special budget for that particular.
Outside of our general budget? Will that work?
I'll run in the best, something on this floor.
I know what's going on. Leave it till eleven.
I'm under the impression y'all need to pursue the grant for us. Y'all is not going to count on you money.
Well, is it more similar to us, the fire department grants that we've gotten, I mean, we've done that for them?
That's, that's.
It's the big total today.
The county will be, if they're interlocal between the county and, and Nortex, now it's been on admin at work, and really, basically, the, the main thing that y'all have to do is write the checks.
We won't have to have an interlocal between us.
Well, now, however, y'all, I don't know, y'all may already have one or have a MOU about how y'all handle stuff between you, I, I don't, I don't know, I'm not going to speak with that.
Why else am I in the water?
Loading water?
Yeah.
Do we need an interlocal?
Personally, I would do an interlocal or MOU, explain to them what's going to do, that they're going to pay, they're going to pay the match, you know, for the ads, you know, so, so you have it lined out about what's going to happen, what their expectations are back home, you know, you don't want to be in the day, somebody come up and say, well, I thought you were going to pay this, and well, I thought you were going to pay this, so.
People come in and out of government.
Yeah, so, you know, that is for your own protection, personally, I would do.
Do you have a copy, when you did the Will Barker town, did you have a copy, statement, a little proof between?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, we've got the interlocal written on it, we can, we can mail it.
Yeah, change it.
It's ours, yeah, okay, we can do that. But now, how y'all internally, between the two, if it's a MOU or interlocal, I don't know how y'all do stuff in, in the county.
I guess it's corporation.
Nineteen sixty-four.
Sixty-four?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, you may already have one existing, I don't, I don't know, I doubt very seriously.
But you got a model that we could use.
Oh, yeah, well, we, we can send down the interlocal for us, between us and the county, that's not a problem, we, we can have that to you instead.
It was created before, before bail out. Bail out.
But, you know, that, that's really what we're here asking for is, is, uh, support, and like I say, do that, we need to do interlocal, we'll start what we do, and, you know, we'll have to hold the public hearing, and, you know, just start the process.
You're going to do all that?
We'll do all that.
Okay.
That's what I think we need to do, just do like he talked about, you know, we do that between us and them, get the process started, and then we can work out.
Well, bring us a lot.
We do need new water. We do need new water.
Do you? Not as, not as round as Graham's, but.
This explains all.
Should, if you have any questions, of course, I know you've got my number.
Anybody else?
That's a good joke, isn't it? We sit here too.
Somebody else has got a question, name it up on here, on the, on the. I know Chris Phillips got one. That's me.
Okay, the, 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 just, I would, you give us the.
I think that's everything you need, everything you need to know, if you got any questions, you know, you can just call or you can.
So, um, I, I guess if I'm understanding this right, so pass through grant, it would, Young County would have a whole contract between us and the USDA.
TDA, Texas Department. Yes.
Department of Agriculture.
Yes. Or Community Development Block Grant.
Also part of the community block.
Yeah, exactly.
And we would be a pass through, so I guess probably a motion to pursue such grant that's been explained to us, like that, that loading waters file being ordered.
So would.
Second.
We'll let it begin.
We will have an interlocal on the wire too. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Good to see you, buddy.
He's upright, isn't he?
He's upright, that's a good thing.
That's right.
Call in favor?
Did you read that to the secretary? She wants you to read stuff, re- re-motion, restate the motion.
Okay, we're, we're about.
We'll get you out of here too. Jimmy made the motion, Matt second.
Just FYI, the phone lines are down at here and, and so.
Phone lines or AT&T?
AT&T.
No, AT&T's working, they're all.
No, AT&T's working, they're all, their systems working.
Sure.
Oh, what's the thing?
Maybe work there, I don't know.
We can't stand in this like right now, you see.
Between you and us. Taking out a report as well. Travis is John Marsha, so, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, Cindy, this is my, I can speak to Ronnie, please. His name. I don't like county commissioner. Thank you, darling, I do appreciate that, I still get a lot, I still got people calling me, asking me insurance questions, and I love it. I'm here for you anytime tonight, okay? You're quite welcome. You'll always be stay part of the meeting. Mister Robertson, how you doing? Yes, sir. You talking about building a community building? Yeah, first off, we'd have to get, have to get past this code. Which I'm willing to certainly try. Okay, you think the clubs have the stomach for, if they have stomach for ongoing maintenance? Yeah, it could be just a, you know, most of the shell is just a, you know, median, median, median. Sure. I think maybe that's where this whole thing was headed anyway, and I think that's the reason maybe that the grant always mentioned one piece of property, so they could give it to the city for that particular thing. Unless it's me surmising that. Sure. All right, give me, just give me a jump today to follow in my thoughts, get more than. All right, well, keep it, you know, keep that what we can and can't do, and get with you when I do, okay? Okay, that's, that's best I can do right at this moment. It is, it certainly does need to be a positive, right, certainly does need to be a positive for the county, obviously. I just hope this, any kind of jealousy, yeah, I just hope there's not any, you know, kind of, jealousy or monstering between the county and the city that would affect that kind of decision. Yeah. Right. The whole character. Okay, well, let me see what I can do, no, you can do that, we'll do this. Thank you, sir.
Think you got air in your gills.
Do what?
Feel like air in your gills.
Is it not, is it not handling the humidity?
Nope.
He's going through menopause. Mental problem.
We gonna go ahead and get the line done, that could get this.
I think we need to.
Definitely could.
Backing in and.
Uh-oh.
Broke some permits.
Broke down on you, man.
I need to look at it, and I'll, I'll need to talk to it.
Yeah, I'll need to look at it.
Long been?
Been, been. That's that water line.
Ooh, Shepherd Lane, what I'm talking about. Five hundred and nine, probably not.
Be a freebie. Where you at, Mr. Green?
Do what now?
Where you at on our agenda, discuss?
Why?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Okay, there it is, yeah, mobile phones. Fourteen.
Oh, it's the water supply people.
That's a freebie. There you go. Hey, she said that we didn't have to follow them up another.
You know, but I'll just tell you. I just need to hear this, let me take that first. You could jerk and test.
But this next one, um, there's one, eight, eight, four.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's what she said this morning. Shit, anyway.
It goes all the same as yesterday.
Yeah.
He's gonna do four things to get him out.
Yeah. He's a pretty big guy.
He may wanna do a whole board clutch.
He won't drown, I mean.
I'm sure it.
I didn't know what he said, tell him until I walked up and decided.
He did, he, he, he missed on, if you go across and it's not brushy.
So we're gonna go to.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Well, it's just, hey. Oh, it's good. Probably stuff, yeah.
Thanks so much whenever I.
No more.
Do those things, whenever I reveal the minutes or reveal my.
Send them.
Special thing and, and then I'll.
Change them again.
I'll send that key, that document to a lot, here anymore.
And then I move them over and then to, to.
I hope it doesn't take those things.
I don't know, he, he's last time, but that was right up in my warrant, yeah. He's not savage. Cause I was showing him the warrant, he's a lot better.
Check in with her, I think you check in with her?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure.
I wonder if she working up there at the, no, no.
Then resales, you know, it's now twelve minutes till eleven. This is Tuesday, the night of October, we're back in session. Moving down to number fourteen, discuss, consider quotes, warn of communications and mobile phone taxes or dispatch radio equipment, repair or replacement. Single lane here, you can come up and give us a field.
Okay, just a few. Unfortunately, I gave my last copy that away, but I.
You need to.
No, uh, I just won't be able to quote the numbers exactly, but I'll tell you where the sheet, what sheet they're on. Well, as, as you know, from, uh, the sheriff and what have you, that their, their console is no longer supported, it's outdated, we need to take a look at it, visit replacing it. Uh, they're, you know, we're moving into the project twenty-five world and communication, so, uh, part of replacing it would be upgrading everything to project twenty-five, so they can, you can take it digital mode. And, uh, what I've put together is, is a quote to do that, uh, it's gonna replace, uh, both console positions at the sheriff's office, uh, with the new, uh, MINT five thousand, which is a voiceover IP console system. And, uh, once again, we'll have two operator positions, uh, the radios will be, uh, still be in the equipment room in the back by the communication tower. Uh, what we propose is continue using the lines and antennas on the communication tower and, uh, install our, uh, radios, our gateways, computers, and the internet, or the, uh, the internet switch or the, the switch that connects everything together, it'll be a closed system, secured closed system, uh, there at the sheriff's office. And, uh, it'll, it'll give them quite a few advantages of what they, you know, currently have. Uh, they, they currently can do what we call instant recall, this will do instant recall, where if the dispatcher is filling out something and it's, what they, what they say to me, you know, they can, they can go back to it and pick that message up, listen to it, and record it down properly. Uh, if, if they're wondering, well, what officer was talking to me, who was that, they can go back and look at an ID with that particular message and everything, and they know exactly who it was, the time, timestamps, everything. And they can look back in that to do that, and it helps them do their recording. Uh, we will tie, I know here recently we've had problems with the, uh, recorders and stuff, they'll tie your, your radios to the recorders, or you can fulfill your recording of your radio traffic for, uh, everybody that you dispatch for, including all the MINT and what have you in the afternoon. And, uh, every channel we put on there will have the capability in project twenty-five, so I know the sheriff's office, they're, they're ready to move project twenty-five, they've got all project twenty-five equipment, they just, you know, don't have the capability to talk to them on dispatch. We can move that over, uh, they'll be able to talk to them in dispatch. Uh, currently, they've got, uh, actually a secure channel, we can move that secure channel over to dispatch if y'all would like. And if, you know, in most institutes where they need to secure, secure communications, they could go across the readers and still talk to dispatch and everything else. Uh, once again, all their current radios have the capability of doing encryption, but they're not doing much encryption, cause dispatch can't do encryption well. Uh, this will give them that capability. And, uh, the radio equipment, in the first page you'll see, uh, I've got a summary there. The, uh, the first line item there is all the radio equipment, it's actually on your third page right there, uh, it'll say something. And the first line items gonna be equipment that comes directly from Motorola on HGA C pricing, which is a state contract price, guaranteed, uh, it's what they've negotiated with the state of Texas. And a lot of that equipment on there is at or below my cost if I were to try to resell it. Uh, the second line item is, uh, mobile phones are, are my part of the install and equipment that I'll be providing. Uh, I've chosen to go ahead and provide, uh, to stay with a computer company that's, you know, local to which I falls, we use them all the time, PC NAND. And, uh, they, they stand behind everything, so I chose to go ahead and use them because they are local and that is, you know, since we're voiceover IP, that's what we're gonna be relying on, is that computer capability. And they'll have replacements that I can, you know, if something happens, you get hit by one, and they'll have a replacement, I can haul it down here and stuff like that. Uh, it's a lot better than going with, uh, you know, Motorola with so many computers and a lot more expense, but, uh, they'll sell a computer, and in order to get it, warranty and everything, we'd extend it into Motorola and one thing or another. Here, we're, we're dealing with a local, a local vendor, and so that's what I've chosen to do. And, uh, further into the, uh, booklet that I set up for you guys, it's a breakout of those, those two charges that I showed. The Motorola is, is gonna be set up like what we done when we purchased all the Motorola radios, is you're actually gonna make a purchase order out straight to Motorola for. And, uh, what that gives you, gives you that preferred state of Texas, uh, HGA C pricing, which is a very, very good price. And, uh, that is, that's, that's essentially the, the cost of the whole system there. And then, uh, the next, next page after that is, is gonna be, uh, actually two pages after, it's gonna be mobile phones of Texas, it's gonna be my breakout, uh, of my charges and stuff and everything. Uh, once again, the, the PC I buy local and you go on down, and that, those are prices, prices on that sheet, or I've checked with Motorola on their HGA C pricing, those pricings is, is stuff that I can offer you less expensive than what Motorola even offers on their HGA C pricing. And, uh, it's not, uh, most of that equipment, uh, is not, you know, Motorola equipment is aftermarket equipment that I can purchase, it's like what Motorola does, it's off the shelf equipment that I purchase and, uh, put into the system and, and build out the system. And so that, that sums it up, you, you know, you're, you're at somewhere around eighty thousand on warranty, you know, implementation, implementing the system to, to where y'all hundred and ten percent project twenty-five. And, uh, y'all will move forward and, and dispatch on pro- project twenty-five, dispatch, dispatch on analog, uh, dispatch connect, give them monitor DPS when they're in that area, they can listen to DPS. Uh, we will have two channels on our console that's gonna be set, uh, that will have multiple channel programming to do, they can listen to Archer County, they can listen to Jack County, they'll listen to the surrounding counties DPS, and they can listen to everybody that's coming in, or, or that they might be doing some, uh, joint, you know, operations with. They, the dispatch will be different access. They'll be able to, you know, tie fire and everything else, patch, you know, still got that capability, they just like to turn console house. And, uh, but that's, that's pretty much it on the, on the console, if you have any questions, I, I, I'm more glad than.
Yes, if you're, uh, on this, it should be stadium, or should we train? Train them too?
Yes, well, we'll, we'll train on it, it's, it's pretty straightforward, uh, you know, just knowing how to set the console up and, and show them, uh, how to retrieve your instant recall, retrieve, uh, your, your log from your, your IDs coming in and everything, we'll show them how to do that. Uh, I've also got quoted on there, a wireless headset, I think that they were looking at, uh, you know, trying to use wireless headsets, I've got those quoted. And, uh, you know, I say for everything's warranty. What's this? Oh, promotion material. Well, like, we kinda done a walkthrough two weeks ago and kinda, was kinda kicking, kicking around different, different, uh, different ideas. And one of them that, that we felt like was, you know, a pretty good idea was, is, you know, the chief deputy and the sheriff and what have you, maybe have a remote or something in their office, where they can sit in there and monitor, just be sitting there, they can monitor their traffic and everything, they're not carrying a poor, or, and they're not doing this. where they can sit in there and monitor, just be sitting there, they can monitor their traffic and everything, they're not carrying a poor lawyer, and they're not doing this. And if he's sitting there doing his work or paperwork or what have you, he's continually monitoring the system and everything. You can reach out and talk to the deputy acting builder or something like that. And, you know, sometimes if you've got a severe problem or what have you, if I had difficulty getting out, just kind of where you are in the courthouse coming out of the courthouse and the law courts. This would tie to a radio in the back room and they'd be able to talk across it and communicate with the deputies. And I've got this several, several of my, you know, Wichita counties, about, we got ten of them in their, their offices. That they, they could monitor and everything. And, and once we get that there, we can actually put a monitor in, a, actually put monitors, just receive only monitors throughout, using like that also. That's, that's just something that we've got. In addition, it's not part of the, the, but in addition to what we're looking at now is, is perhaps with that in, it's just kind of a, kind of a wish, wishlist, I guess.
Travis, if he did this, I think it might be a good idea to go in and do this today. Just in case we're, kind of, we didn't get it up to date.
Yeah, she, she put the dispatch.
Yes.
Pick up dispatch, pick up calls. And we'll also, on that, I don't know if I've spelled that clear enough, they will have a backup radio that's in dispatch, that they'll be able to, if the console, some reason it would get, get by lightning, the switch or something goes down, they'll have a backup radio, they'll be able to dispatch it down here with replacement parts or, or repair the equipment. They won't ever be a hundred percent now, but they will be, you know, really limited if something does happen, but they'll still be able to communicate.
Do you also have in here, you've got line protection?
Yes, what we're doing is, is on, on, there's actually ten, ten lines going up the, the tower there. We're, we're going to go ahead and replace the surge protectors, lightning protection, or call polyphagers. We'll go ahead and replace those. Those can take and do take multiple hits. I can almost guarantee that every antenna of their own power has been hit once with lightning. All that is, comes down to line and gets what we call polyphagers, shown to ground. And we'll go ahead and replace those, because they can take multiple and they get weak as they, as they take multiple hits. There's actually eleven antennas counting the little antenna that's down below which I just had for North Texas years ago. There's three, three Yawgs and seven Omni direction antennas. Are they, pardon, are they? They're just multiple, you've got, you know, they're going to be, you know, you've got three for home, and you've got dispatch after hours. You've got, you know, actually three for yours, there, there's six, and then you've got two antennas for what they call inter-off radios. There's eight, you've got, you've got fire, I mean, there's nine, so ten on top of it. Tens of probably faulty cameras.
But that's what intercity is?
Yeah, intercity. But also, I believe it's on the very last, but we've spoken about, the work program which you guys, guys for the inmates, when they get out around. They always have to talk in and call back in on the ISO channels. And that antenna is actually, it was inside the jail, ready to exit the jail. What I would do is, I'd get you re-licensed for antennas off that hundred fifty foot tower, have a very good range with it, with a mobile. And they'd be able to communicate with, you know, when they're going back from the work program and everything else with people inside the jail as they're coming up and, and probably fifteen mile radius around the jail, so that antenna, and it would help them run the jail more efficient instead of coming over on these ISO channels.
That's all in addition?
That, that's all in addition. And that last, the quotes are in addition.
Yes.
It's just options. We, we, we just kind of walked around and, you know, looked at different things and kind of, hey, I'd like to see this. And, you know, we asked, we decided to go ahead and put some numbers in.
Sheriff, you said you weren't there yet.
Do I?
So, in addition, just...
Yes. But that's something, that's something y'all can visit down the road. I mean, it's not something that needs to be, the console is what we're really looking at, that we, we really need to take a look at and replace because it's, it's no longer supported. Y'all are looking at upgrades to do Project Twenty-Five. In order to do your upgrade, you're going to have to replace what's not supported, so go ahead.
You hope this is the best.
Sheriff? How do we, what benefit is this to the residents and taxpayers of North Kansas?
With your party?
Does the tire program?
Because the benefit is, if we don't do it, something's going to happen, boom, it's going to go down. We won't have any way of anybody calling in, anybody dispatching, anybody taking. And that's, the lives is what I would get. That's our benefit.
So it's not just a benefit to your daily job, it's a benefit to the entire county?
It's the whole, it's the whole county. This goes down, we're messed up.
Good benefit, very good benefit to our county, this will call emergency services.
I just want to make sure that part is made, well, this business is kind of running through the firing.
Yeah. That's about, that's about Travis.
After five, they're in low count.
I promise you this, if I could get this without having to spend eighty thousand, I could do it.
This is the only part of our system that, I guess you could say, outbated and...
Right.
Over to, to make your life. Yes, already running up to that plus the life, right. No, it's, about them, and their warrant, did they, did they put, what we...
Get anything decided?
Put us going together, but it was not, wasn't completely repaired, or repaired thing.
She was here that day there.
Yeah, we, we spoke about it.
It was an equal equipment, though. It wasn't average, but average is a lot better equipment and offering us a lot more. That's just updated equipment.
Right.
Older equipment that we already have.
Or non-low equipment, we have some low equipment. Dispatch.
Right.
What part of that system we have, and they have is warranted?
The cantilever, the console.
Is it, is it going to be two dispatch?
Two, two positions, yes. Two dispatch positions.
You're talking about having another antenna, so they think... Yeah. I like it, I do. I like it because I think, you know...
You wouldn't have to do dispatch.
Right. Whenever they're going to do these transports to MHMR or whatever, they can do it on it. They don't have to get on the radio all the time and talk to us. They can talk to the jail when they're coming back.
That could be a safety issue.
Right. But that's only with, right, in place. Well, if that's what he's talking, it could be fifteen, twenty miles away, and they could be able to talk.
Probably with a camera.
Yeah. And then fifteen miles. The work crew guy going around doing whatever he's doing, and be on the jail channel instead of on the main channel.
Also, also for sale for, for us for six thousand, we're on that channel. Yes, now that's, the day, the day terminology, that's the software environment. Console is nothing but software. Computer is the console. The software package for an eight-channel console is, is that. Just software packages, where everything is an app, it's a high-dollar app.
Must do, do it.
Yes. Not fair. Oklahoma, Texas, Motorola, Surf, and good.
You say we have it in eighteen budget? We have it in eighteen budget?
We're not putting on a good, like, little transfer around, in case, so you know, dispatch, fire, mic, you know.
That roughness, all the transfer money around and get finance money in eighteen budget? I didn't think you'd listen. You see her hands getting, oh, it's killing it to you.
I'm thinking, and that's why I think...
I think.
Okay, that's a different term.
Okay, now we're okay.
Now we're in a different...
Okay, you're killing me.
I think he did it on purpose.
I think he did too. Trying to get rid of it.
This is still about the light thing.
No, no, but we're still working out the two years, but yeah, the money now is, the money now, it had to be nineteen, eighty thousand? Is that it?
Uh, that's a lot.
All right, let's, let's think about this, yeah, just a minute. We already put in fifteen thousand in the communication, in the budget, so we change it over, so let's keep fifteen thousand.
Yeah. I think we should, we should sit down and break it up and get a little here, get a little, of course, I'm going to pay for it, I have a line that needs to cover, but we still might have to move a little.
Well, I mean, I, I think we should, most of, I mean, the bells and whistles are great, the sheriff's line, but I think we still look at the console now, maybe, like, the future. Right, like the jail stuff.
Well, the con, console is, is that, it's eighty, the console.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying the other stuff.
The other stuff, the other stuff we'll get in the future. I can look, I can, I can, North Texas, I can look, see if there's any random account or possible.
I was wondering about that too.
They do have, from time to time, you know, especially towards this time of year, they'll have some, see if it's out there or something. I mean, I don't know, just something I can look at. I'll get a hold of Motorola Direct. A lot of times they'll, they'll know some money that's left out there, that's still on the table, that they like this. I'll go check for you guys, and then, so we can...
Is there any money out there with Texas Forestry Service for, for your pensions? Right?
Probably not, they, it's mostly for the VA.
I was in Abilene last week, and Texas Forestry Service is there. They've got some money available.
She just had to qualify.
Yeah, let me, let me get some information together.
Go to their website, give them, give them, give them, guys, and see, see what we can qualify for.
Well, I'd like to motion when we build, when we build a console, we can talk about it. And these other two, some of the others, if we're, if we're back there, we can buy money somewhere, whether it's a grant or whatever, we can do that.
Start digging.
Go to there.
Upgrade sheriff's office dispatch now?
Complete console system?
Yes.
And that's a loaded, loaded figure. Seventy-nine, three, four, ten, fifty.
Sheriff, would you like to take that, give a sense of?
Can't.
No, you are a brand new one.
She likes around fingers.
Nothing on the right side of the pistol, of course.
I know, I'm pretty into it.
Motion, uh, within a while, I guess, second one, official, approved, replaced, complete dispatch console system. At a quote price of seventy-nine, three, four, ten, fifty, and that's with Oklahoma, Texas. And all the growth, and the growth, yes. All the growth is going to be the key factor, yeah, it's going to be with, from some of the...
So you need...
HGA-C.
You need the, yeah, so not really...
Yeah.
Is it really what the name?
Those are fun.
He's over the march. She's good at it.
I say you will.
I'm like, it's not necessary, I'm like, um, um, right, should dig it. I'm excited. I'm looking to see if we can get some, some sort of correct money.
Well, when can you start them?
As soon as I get killed.
Let, let, let's say, let's say that we pay for it, and then you do buy the grants. And that, does that, how's that work?
I don't know how.
It's not the grant you have to pay for anyway and get reimbursed.
To reimburse the grant anyway.
You see that, we usually do the exact deal we should do.
Like, there's other thing, like, water, well, we'll get one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we have, we get the question down, that's the, so we send the cities for half the bill of deeds, you're right, they pay the house.
Exactly.
We send the city for half of this bill.
Well, that's a problem, because they all have, they all, they all have responsibility there, and that's...
They, yeah.
But I would like to, just to provide it here. I think I do believe, and that's, like, it would make you a burden, you know, I think, yes.
We did.
We did, but the jungle would be...
Of course, it looks like we had no opportunity to discuss this, we could, we could stay.
I had to, needed.
It's just one of those kind of things that we...
You have to be screaming if that system goes down and we can't dispatch.
You ain't just saying one and eight.
Okay. Let's see him, let's see him.
You would say, don't you get bill?
So then we can, so some of the dispatch is going to be now for...
No, 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 when we get ready to set up, like, like, we'll have a setup, or what you just transferred, or we'll have a computer setup. Uh, we'll have, like, a setup in, in, I've got you a different open rack that we'll have mounted in there. We won't have to mount it, because we'll have to put the old stuff out, that's where we're going, you know, mount the newer, some newer equipment. But we'll be able to run both, limited, because we're limited to antennas. But I'll be able to get your dispatch and what have you over.
Really, you want it in time?
Yeah, yeah, one at a time, or, you know, we're talking about ten antennas and, and, you know, six, six radios that we've got to move over. And if we move it over twenty, you know, if we will, twenty-eight, five, three of those systems are being dispatched out of Army, so we'll, we'll have plenty antennas to transfer over and, and do with them all these dispatches over there. And then we should have everything transferred over with them, they transfer everything over to the dispatch.
Yeah, good.
Nothing for a long time. I love everything.
All right, well, I appreciate it, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate you service.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it. We'll look at number nine, acknowledge declaration and oath of office of county, or deputy county clerk.
Yes, I've hired a person that used to work in the general, his name is Ewan.
Sorry, it's about that.
Less money.
Was he in technology?
Yes, he's got a lot of, yeah.
This is technology, consider this a lot.
Yeah.
First coffee of that in here, I think, please.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that on record, though.
I just try to keep it on the low.
Yes. Report acknowledging such, so.
I guess that's the best salary.
Okay. Sheriff, we're due jail board?
Absolutely. Then we take that. Get us a little... Right, keep on it.
I hope so.
Twelve, next one. Twenty?
Someone mentioned, they're surprised at the fact that sheriff's officer will be working Texas. They would be working? They definitely, yeah.
I mean, there's nothing says, there's nothing law is just a catch.
Right.
DPS normally works at Texas, when the county does.
They're, like, they didn't know that you could.
Oh, yeah.
Do you work them on county roads?
I work them anywhere, I work them in, it's...
DPS work on county roads?
Yes. It just depends on what's going on, whether they're, like, in another county working, can't get over there where we're at.
By the middle?
Right. But most time we just, I would say probably ninety-eight percent of the time, they develop accidents.
They do, it's a lot of fire.
Yes, and...
I'll tell you, you work them on the...
Uh, right, and a lot, you know, like, deer accident, that's why I'm...
Yeah.
We're not, we're not work accidents, yeah, but all we do is employ one of them. Okay, uh, I'll not report, I mean, you know, seventy-seven total service calls, which is low for us in a month. This was last month, we had sixty-seven civil process papers served. Thirteen arrests, two drug late arrests, although the dogs are loaded on vehicles. Drunk marijuana, based off of, on marijuana here.
So has the new civil process?
Well, we just started, we started one. And I can tell you, he is serving a lot.
Good.
A lot, yeah, so, which I think's gonna, we're gonna see, it's been good. It's gonna be good.
Keep it up on it.
As soon as this, you'll see, I think we should be seeing a lot this month, because, you know, he's been bringing, he's been doing a lot to you. So, he keeps up with it, he, he's pretty, he's good, uh...
Like I said, something more, but it's gonna happen. Yeah, on time for himself.
Yeah, well, that's good, it's gonna be good.
I hope it's, they were, uh, good, so...
It's a good, yeah, it's a good, uh, about, uh... The forensic interviews is...
Yes.
Five interviews. Eight, two, eight, two, one's two, yes.
I was talking, like, to where that?
Yep.
Is the, is the police still on now?
I am, we are, we are a cattle owner.
Where have they gone?
They're over there behind the vet, right over here.
Is that, how's that working out?
He ain't doing... Yeah, there's, they're all behind the vet and looking good, I mean, they look better now, and I, way luckier.
Sure, so.
All right, then, just to let y'all know about those cows, we left the bull there. We didn't wanna bring him out there, there's another bull right next door, I mean, right next door. Just that, all the rest of his behind there.
So we'll keep up the feed and everything in three acres?
So far. Hopefully, it won't be there much longer. But even if that right there where they're at is a lot better than where they were, I'm sure. I promise you that. So, but anyway, on the jail, I think today our population's fifty-seven, so we've been running anywhere from fifty-seven to sixty-one on average. We transported quite a few to TDC last month.
Like you.
Yeah. We have one big, they're very, very nice. That's been good, too. Yeah, it has been good, it's been good. Anything else, pretty much, same, we're not housing in Ei County.
You made Tim Mark Walkers, which is playing pretty close to about the same percentage, Dr.?
Yes. I wanna say last, I wanna say, front of that person, not the end of the month, we had sixty-one in jail and seventeen over.
Who was in that MCMR?
We didn't try to, but you talked, so, it's very, it's like you are. Yes, yes. So that's quite a few of them.
Does the new teleconference signal help with center last month?
I think it will, but once again, that's just another financial burden, no, no reason. Yeah, we got, so... Twenty nineteen, I said that one, twenty nineteen, you have to have a lot of, I don't know, if they're not a hundred percent sure.
We're hoping it is.
Right, yeah, right. But I guarantee it's gonna go over, we said, go over, get down to it. But we, guys can get them, we'll have to start getting compliance.
That interview will take place from the jail?
Which I think it'll work out great, I mean, it's, you talk about saving us money and, you know, having to bring people in to do that.
You don't run that, huh? Yeah, or, long day, can't, already do it.
That's what I heard, already started. Well, the cost, I mean, I heard, I heard they're, they're doing good, but it did cost a lot, it was a long, yeah.
They should, yeah, great, yeah.
No, but Joey was talking about it.
Is that gonna be compliant with, uh, the same of land act, the way they've done it set up over there?
Well, I understood it would be, I haven't talked to the sheriff or anybody about it, talked to Joey a little bit, when I read it, but it's on you.
Yeah. The teleconference, the camera?
No, I don't know, we already set up, I wonder if there's, I mean, if there's any way we can just add to what we already have.
You gotta have like a special.
You know, that may be, well, we do, man, I gotta check it out.
Yeah, what psychologist taking a video conference call three in the morning?
For the twenty-four hours, you can do it during the daylight, but...
Yeah, not a lot, I mean, very seldom, we have to get them to come out, but most times when we do, they're coming home. Driving to the sheriff's office.
You go up to rest at three in the morning on Saturday, you gotta do it by three in the morning on Sunday, right?
So they, they can do it in the day whenever he's there, but...
Is there one such?
There's times where we're not rep, you know, we're just, we want them to come and interview them, assess them, and...
Not under...
We're not under arrest.
You just shut them up, then, there's your, there's your job. I, I think you have to be on the law, because of the laws. You know what I'm saying? If you're hip of laws, you have to be on the, so...
Well, it's just, I have to secure video calls.
Right, I'm, I'm saying, I'm sure, yeah.
We could, we could put it in that, I mean, you know, we're getting ahead of ourselves here, with that broom coming in to the lobby next to... Black, Blackstock's office, you lock that door, use it just for street interviews, and that. That way you don't have to go to the security area of jail.
Right. With the laptop cameras just in there, not, oh, yeah, work on?
Should.
I'm sorry, one of them certain voice, or on, or on, or on, or on, or on.
Yeah, they made, and they. You talk about three different things because one that he, they were talking about at the beginning was they're already in jail. They're already under the supervision of the NCR. And instead of taking them over to.
What is it?
Then they would do that right there.
That's one thing that you can do inside. Registration.
You can do it in there.
But that's.
Avoid all the health problems.
Yeah. I like even having them in the middle because they're in there a lot.
Well, you just have to take them, they'll say.
Yeah. Like we still have. A couple few months we need to.
It is.
It's not as much like. Always. They stay for twenty two years.
That is why it's been all the time.
That's it, I mean. Didn't say we did quite good medical. Same blue bill. The NCR is a medical agency.
Something to do with.
Who was the dentist? Sorry, who's the dentist now? He used to be. He used to be, I don't know, babe. Unlikely this.
All right, thank you, sir.
Good job.
Out of number twelve is discuss Senator Revolution, Texas Department of Attorney, Texas speaking Texans on delivery meal grant program. We do this every year. Have been paid three hundred and fifty dollars to calling senior cup center, I believe what is called Young County Senior Cup Center. Thank what it is at eight hundred and twenty dollars to. Young County Senior Citizens Association. And that's for their own meals program that allows them to qualify for this. TDA grant. Good, it's a thank you grant. Thank you. Uh, resolution. About thirteen, about fourteen. Fifteen discuss Senator Lee's purchase report from American National Police Department. Woman, child vehicle, and vessel vehicles. And also included in this. That's one, not two, long as that. Which is.
I think I just made enough of the front there. Everyone's. We're there for.
That last copy that paper too.
You're not getting it, it's county.
County issued papers.
The, um. Twenty eighteen vehicles are no longer available. So, and. We discussed Travis the other day. What his intent to use for the new vehicle. She go, I'll make her copies. What he is looking at. We know he needs a, a jail vehicle. Well, the new, uh, we have to order twenty twenty explorers. So the twenty nineteen tacos were going to be cheap. Getting a twenty twenty explorer, so. We have a price for. Tacos for the, for the jail. On what sheet it says, um. You just buy outright a three year lease and a five year. Now, on the, um, three year, the interest is four point two four, on the five is four point seven four. I gave y'all copies of it. Also, uh, taco. These are the police map. If we went with tacos, but. You want to talk, talk about. We also have. Bids on F one fifty pickups and what they are are special service vehicles. They have the suspension system. And this heavier seat and the heavier electrical system to handle radiums and flies. And that's what the price of the pickups. Now, the pickups, what he'd be looking at, putting them in admin, moving his either as a jail transport or putting in. Um, in the field, that, is that or not? Because it's equipped already, all it needs is strapped. And he's a pack. Um. But if he did that, then we'd look at the two pickups. And then. One taco, new taco, either to go into the jail transport or either in the field. He can move his, because it only has thirty thousand.
Not me. I would give mine to. Somebody to throw. And one of these pickups. And then take that taco that we're going to get, put it in. Probably to John. That way we can get rid of some of these other vehicles that. Cost us a lot of money to keep. Give his pickup, because I think even, even as old as that pickup is, he's still got, he still has less mileage than most of the ones that the other admin drive.
Then the new Tahoe go on trouble.
New Tahoe would go into, probably into transportation in the jail.
We put money in.
And I think we'll be, we'll put a lot of miles on those.
I think what we could is.
The thing is, if we look at here, is these payments are based on straight buy. And we're not going to straight buy, but we're going to take what we're using. Or selling the vehicles that we're going to have, or trading or, that'd be the first tiered payments which I like it. That, that payment that awesome.
Yeah, I mean, you think it will still let you decide that we're going to be gone like.
Yeah, we had, uh, we had that black, that old black pickup that just built it first now.
Why won't we have much free?
Thanks for all the getting there.
We can fix it, or we can sell it as is.
And then, uh.
What else? We have the whole four wheel drive Tahoe, the black. And then there was a, a white Tahoe. All they think of the white Tahos are like.
And then, then also we're going to do the charger also.
The charger.
Yeah. So maybe it'd be better to go ahead and get the new one to go in the jail and then use that money for the charger anyway, because it's all in your budget.
I think more than likely the way that we do this, put that new one into transportation. Because they're going to put a lot of miles on it.
Let it be the long range, or it makes the, the older one be the short range. That way you can manage your miles.
Remember how many miles that other one has?
Miss charges.
But all of these, um, are equipped for, for cat fleet. And have the equipment on there. You know, it's just a matter of.
Available till it's now.
It would take.
Three months.
He orders them right now.
How long when? They're going to be going to twenty twenty or thirty two?
Yeah, we need to, we need to move on now, or we're not going to be able to.
Forty days, they go to twenty twenty.
It's crazy, they haven't even heard of.
Black Christmas at all.
Oh, before Halloween.
I think it's before Halloween.
Okay, well, these F one fifty, did you get it right down the line? Inside of that section, I don't know.
Yes.
The west pocket here, we're looking at the, the one in front of my hips.
Yes.
Nine thousand. Sorry, bro.
Nine thousand each.
Oh, now this. This is if you do it for three years and you have the residual, uh, and you have the nine thousand at the end. The five years is going all the way out and paying it out the whole way. And the interest rates are down there. Yeah, it's a little bit cheaper to go ahead and do it three years and have the, that last payment, nine thousand. Payment's a little bit higher.
Tiny bit on interest.
As I said, these are quotes and one of the things that really does recruit cat fleet, he's able to deal with him and do this. Yeah, that's the total down there. That's the payment that you're trying to. Oh, yes.
And that money we get after disposal of all those vehicles, would go where?
Well, we, the thing we could do is, I mean, but it had to wait to get those something to be able to put them down on this.
No, we can still put it in there.
Think it, I don't know if you play against their contract yet, or something.
Oh, you could, oh yeah, you could pay it.
Yeah.
Sure.
I think. Mark, Mark here. Shepherd Mark.
Shepherd Mark.
Do it to.
That what?
Yeah.
This needs money.
Oh my God, I have to learn. Somebody didn't Facebook it for it, that we are.
Don't know a thing about it.
Flood warning, Young County, yes, uh.
We would know about it.
Eight thirty AM till eight thirty three AM.
All I know is.
River coming in.
We, we, all we love, everybody running, we should be working.
Need to be gone. Standing in the middle of one fourteen.
I'm going to hide a coin out there.
Where did this information come from?
Yes.
Okay.
It's got to be real. It's like a Google assessment.
Oh, yes. I said, I said somewhere.
Yeah, change them. We fixed that gate last week.
Bunker.
Bunker.
What do you want, man? That's the main issue.
It's your money you're spending, as long as you got your payments here, buddy.
When, when Maserati is that quick?
Maserati's around.
I know they're going fast, but.
Sir.
Our, our rock roads don't, not good on.
He'll always send you, he'll send you an email.
I thought he was going to send an interest rate email, but I didn't.
Okay. What do you see it was, just the interest rate? He been trying to get quotes on prices.
And I, and I got it.
Get a chance, could you turn the lower tongue? See if that bow water crossing is passing.
Yeah. Really going to get this.
They're going to be able to get a vehicle. But if you need to act on it, you need to act on it now, just have it like. They like it, bro.
You don't mind riding a bicycle, probably.
Now, I think we need to go ahead and sell the vehicle.
Well, yeah. I don't have.
Can you, can you, how many can you do with that?
You said you're not possible.
I did.
You know, the, the cool thing about this is, is, is. Once we get this file, we're not going to have to worry about the payment until this will be here twenty twenty. And whatever we do on these vehicles, we get sold, just going to lessen the cost of what it is.
We put money in the budget for someone.
Yeah. And you know, that's the thought, guys, is if we sell those vehicles, put that down on the vehicles and then take the money that we have for the first year payment.
Absolutely.
Go ahead and do it, then that would make it that much less the next time.
Go ahead and make this your payment. I mean, it's already in the budget for.
Anything, anything we do is going to go down there.
Good thing. What a good thing, build that much.
President Disney, guys, would, um.
Okay, you want two F one fifties, four Tahoe?
Tahoe.
Come back over here.
The main release was.
Sounds smarter than the Tahoe.
Yes, and yes. No, that was if he got the three Tahos, but like I said, I think it's going to fit him better right now, just to go ahead and get the one Tahoe for the transport. And get two pickups for admin.
What do you think on the pickups?
Sir.
What do you think on the pickups?
Yeah, admin, SSV, F one fifty.
And they are the, yeah, they are the.
Just one that hopefully.
Super sassy, super sassy.
Just alike, they're black. Four by fours, they are four by fours.
Break down croquettes.
They're super sassy beer.
Plastic seats.
Plastic.
Sure, plastic seats, break down haves.
Sorry. Plastic floors.
It'll be the first time. I, I used to like to.
Moon hubcaps are whip acting? The moon hubcaps are whip acting?
Yeah.
Sorry, whooping.
Kind of tails with. Because it's still, it's still the police package on these jails.
Well, there's a, as far as the, the police pack forty nine or something.
See, I gave them that first book with all the tacos. Yeah, it's probably best. Whip it on this. A little bit less. They've got the cage. This was that.
Well, I don't know why there's a difference, because really, I don't see why. Why there would be a difference.
The business part.
Well, this is what he's giving us.
There's, there's no light bars and stuff like that on there, right?
Well, you don't, we have, we have light bars on the trophy. Only there's no extra lighting in jail.
Right, we put the same lane, but that make it less.
It is less.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't know why I still.
Yeah, his isn't strapped, so when he puts it, that's all he has to do to his is get it strapped.
Yes, they will.
Yes.
Ten speed, I think.
That's a ten speed, I think.
Is that really, is that right?
A ten speed, I think.
Yeah.
What is that name?
I mean, it does lots of shit.
Does lots of shit, lots of different operating.
It feels bad, it feels slow, it feels. Like the pro Tahoe, in a jail Tahoe, there's no difference. Especially being there, it's another.
That can go through your bed, bitch.
You know? You're going to have lives, you're going to have lives without sirens. The only thing that might be different on jails, you don't have a siren. It is, it's, it's the same. Yeah, everything, everything's good. You buy the pursuit package, what you. Two thousand dollars siren.
You're wearing.
Sir. You told it to get it.
Well, that'd be something to do that money for that he got from those ones you sent. Then we don't have to have it in the contract.
Something to do, and that may be something to do.
You can do that on.
Yeah. I had to still order it, because.
Yes.
Sell that bourbon. Yeah, that, I, you know.
Well.
I have a lot of dogs being on this.
As soon as month, but you have to say you got a quarter. Thank you very much for understanding, man.
Okay. What you want, guys?
Two pickups on top?
Two pickups, Tahoe.
Two pickups, Cali-Hell.
True, bud.
Oh, that's good, there you go, spin.
Something I think we probably should have been doing. A little bit every now and then.
All right, dude, we need to go.
So two F one fifty four by fours and then the jail. We want to go with the three year or the five year, the three year you have the residual nine thousand at the end, but that's just like another payment.
I feel three years is going to be a lot less.
Oh, yeah. And so what would, what would you, what would you like us to do?
I think we, didn't we do ten thousand?
Okay, so that's a lot of money.
We did.
And then we talked about selling the charger and. I think should have quite a bit.
Charger, yeah, no money gets you any paycheck. Right?
So whatever he's got paid, we're going to put now. For this year.
As plus. Plus, plus whatever we have on our payments, we have set aside.
That's true, yeah. Though that.
Yeah.
And that should lower that.
That'll lower that high, a whole lot, yeah.
So.
Yeah, I believe, but that's going to even lower than the residual.
And I'll get you comments on it. American National. It will be two F one fifties four by fours.
In a Cali-Hell.
One Cali-Hell and do three year lease on the.
Fresh air, clean water, really good state.
It is.
Three year lease.
I guess that's my motor to give.
Is that good?
Size.
American National will get. Be.
Take trouble off, man.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Well, I can fix a little back way to get it.
I can't do anything without you guys.
The detention center.
Well, I think now if you evacuate it, we can, I'm not, I don't place it.
Your evacuation. Maybe, but that sounds exactly. No, the county's not evacuating.
Nathan dropped his article right there.
And Nathan said, Facebook said.
Said the sheriff ignored the call to evacuate from Facebook.
No danger to the citizens at this time.
Meanwhile, back in the ring.
Out of number sixteen, discuss considered additional electrical ice pack systems, LEC detention. LEC detention center for repair, replacement, drive quotes. I thought we were going to have Michael's written in there. I didn't see that in there.
And Marshall went to check and see if we heard from the adjuster. Wait, Marshall went to check and see if she could get a hold of the adjuster. But I have received, um, a couple of bills that I need to get paid out of there. And, um, one is from Lansing. For the women's wing. Uh, and for older kitchen. These are for the, I think they're twenty five thousand, oh sixty, one thirty three. And, um, and then I received a small one from J and J for a hundred and thirty seven dollars. And that's when they went out to try to get everything back up and running when that happened. Uh, you know, I, wherever, you know, I know we've been talking about it one time, using the tobacco money or if we get some insurance, but the thing is, I need to pay them where they need to be paid out of, which is the jail. Five sixty three, didn't be the jail, maybe, so that way when I'm dead and gone, so they look back, where we paid for that out of, it should be paid out of correct lines.
Twenty eight, twenty nineteen.
Yes, we're, we're doing anything.
Yeah. But I do, um, I do, I'm going to go ahead and get these payments, I'm going to pay them out of nineteen budget and then whatever we do, we get insurance money or whatever. I'm getting the money right down there. Yeah, because I hate.
They have sent us to Michael's right now. Or, I believe they did, didn't they?
Well, we have, we have some license, I should.
Want to know. And I guess I. But I didn't receive it here. Michael monthly, and then it was quarterly. Or annual, that's very different.
It was, it was monthly and quarterly, but. And, and there's also, they, they, they were not, they wanted them to use the filter, we buy the filters and then buy the belts and everything, we're trying to switch the green one.
And they give the paper.
I bet they, uh, she live out of money, babe.
And that's a magnet.
Yeah.
The magnet, sorry. He's going to board, I go, I go in front of him, I go, you want to look out now or?
I guess we'll pass say it once.
Yeah, I did.
Do you want them to come and talk around it?
Uh, 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 they're, uh, way.
Sure, you did. We'll do that, but say thank them on the names, what did you do to come back and thank this guy?
He may have a copy, we, we discussed it on the last.
Do you want me to sit? Just try to just talk about what's been done and what now seems to be done out there as well.
That would be good, do a status report as well.
They've, they've got everything ahead. Everything in the jail with electrical.
So, we're talking about the repairs. Uh, I guess they get the bill for these, we're paying them a nineteen hundred budget, and then wherever we get the money, we'll move it there, move it back down there, increase that budget. We're still looking at the insurance paying. Marshall has to come back, so I guess she has to run that. The adjuster, she was fixing, she led to get them all. But also talking about the maintenance agreement, they have Stacy and I think some of that had some questions on the maintenance agreement.